Hello, everyone. My name is Matt Howard. I'm the Director of Community Development. We are just about ready to get started. Eileen had a family emergency tonight, so she won't be able to join us. Bear with us as we piece together a meeting without her. We're going to do our best, and I'm here to run most of the Zoom functions, switching us to executive session and whatnot. So, Ron, Mr. Cuchero, you can kick us off.
Okay. Just going to begin by taking a roll. Hey, Randy Bishop.
I'm here.
Brian Greenwald, I'm Brian Greenfield, I'm sorry. Okay. Council Engager.
I am here.
Chairman Boivai.
Here.
Nicholas Husser is absent tonight. Hey, Megan Talente.
Here.
Brian Tannenhouse, I believe, is absent tonight. Hey, Robert Seaman.
Here.
Joseph Cristiano.
Here.
Matthew Kyle.
Present.
Christopher Mercer.
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum, Mr. Chairman.
Alrighty, thank you.
I'll just read the Open Public Meetings Act statement now. "I hereby declare this meeting of the Howe Township Planning Board to be open, adequate notice having been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act in the following manner: First, on January 6, 2023, a copy of said notice was mailed to the Asbury Park Press and the Star Ledger. Second, on January 6, 2023, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the clerk of the township of Howe. Third, on January 6, 2023, said notice was posted in the office of the Planning Board and on the bulletin board of the Howe Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9, Howe Township, New Jersey. Members of the public will have a chance to ask questions and comment on the applications once the chairman opens the hearing up to members of the public. If you wish to ask questions or comment on an application, you will be asked to use the "to raise your hand" feature, and we will bring you into the meeting one at a time. You will need to have audio and video capability, you will be sworn in, and you will need to provide your game and address. For anyone calling in, you can press *9 to raise your hand or to lower your hand, and *6 to mute or unmute yourself. The meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcast on Howe Township TV." Okay, Mr. Chairman, you can leave us on the pledge.
Alrighty, thank you, Mr. Cuchero. Okay, so we stand, say the pledge, and then a moment of silence for our brave men and women serving here and abroad. "I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Alrighty. Okay. Let's get rocking and rolling. I don't think we have any minutes for tonight. Do we have any vouchers?
I know, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, no correspondence?
I know, Mr. Chairman.
Alright, so we can get rocking and rolling with the resolutions. Do we have to do each one individually, Ron, or can we just vote on all four at once?
I'm not sure who is here, who may have been absent, so vote on them individually.
Okay. So, our first resolution is for the Planning Board Attorney. It's their resolution appointing Ronald Cuchero, Esquire of Weiner Law Group for the 2023 year. The eligible voters are Greenfield, Seaman, Talente, Gazer, Kyle, Mercer, and myself. Can somebody take roll?
No. Okay, well, first, do we have a motion to?
Yeah, need a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Memorialize.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Hey, Matt, if you could just call the names of the eligible voters.
Sure.
Hang on one second. I'll have that resolution at the ball. Hang on one second. Mr. Greenfield?
Yes.
Mr. Huzar is not present. Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Mr. Talente?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhouse is not present. Mr. Gazier?
Yes.
Mr. Kyle?
Yes.
Mr. Mercer?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Next resolution is for our Planning Board Engineer. It's the resolution appointing Laura Newman of CME Associates for 2023. The eligible voters are Greenfield, Seaman, Talente, Gazer, Kyle, Mercer, and myself.
I'll make a motion. Memorialize.
Thank you. I'll second.
Mr. Greenfield?
I'll second. Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Mr. Talente?
Yes.
Councilman Gazer?
Yes.
Mr. Kyle?
Yes.
Mr. Mercer?
Yes.
Chairman Boivai?
Yes. Okay. Next resolution is for our Planning Board Planner. It's a resolution appointing Jennifer Beam for the year 2023. Eligible voters: Greenfield, Seaman, Talente, Gazer, Kyle, Mercer, and myself. Could I have a motion?
Don't move.
Second.
Thank you.
Roll call, Mr. Greenfield?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Mr. Talente?
Yes.
Councilman Gazer?
Yes.
Mr. Kyle?
Yes.
Mr. Mercer?
Yes.
Chairman Boivai?
Yes. Okay, and our last resolution is for our Planning Board Tree Expert. It's a resolution appointing Sherry M. Spiro of CME for 2023. Eligible voters are Greenfield, Seaman, Talente, Gazer, Kyle, Mercer, and myself. Could I have a motion?
Move.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Roll call, Mr. Greenfield?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Mr. Talente?
Yes.
Councilman Gazer?
Yes.
Mr. Kyle?
Yes.
Mr. Mercer?
Yes.
Chairman Boivai?
Yes. I don't believe we have any submission waivers. Mr. Cuchero, before we get into the applications, do we need to swear Mr. Bishop in?
Mr. Bishop, were you sworn in upon your appointment at the council?
No, sir, I was not.
Okay.
I have the oath in front of me.
Okay, then, if you can just sign the oath.
Not a problem.
And then we'll, I will sign that. I witnessed it. Okay, we can move forward.
Good to go. Okay, first up is case number SP109890 Industrial Court LLC, and that's for the preliminary and final major site plan with ancillary variance and design waiver relief.
Matt, we would be letting in Ken Pape, and then he can tell you who else needs to be let in.
Perfect. Mr. Pape's on his way in.
Okay, Mr. Pape, if you could just, okay, if you could just let us know who else needs to come in, Mr. Pape.
Surely. Good evening. Peter Strong, Scott Kennel, and Steve Rodasty are the applicant's professional witnesses this evening.
Okay, everyone's on their way in. Just give them one minute.
Thank you. There we go. Mr. Chairman, may we begin?
Yeah, please.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, board members, board professionals, and public, good evening. My name is Kenneth Pape. I'm with the firm of Heilbronn Pape, and this evening I have the responsibility of representing your applicant, 90 Industrial Court LLC. This is the third hearing that the Planning Board conducted with regard to this matter. The first hearing on August 4th was less than 10 minutes, and there was no testimony. The Board took jurisdiction and allowed us the opportunity just to put the site plan up as an exhibit with no testimony. On October 20th, we presented the sum and substance of the application and substantially completed the presentation when there was comments from board members asking that the parking lots be redesigned to separate car traffic from the car traffic from the truck traffic. We pointed out that that was an original design that had been presented, but it required variances, and for that reason, it was withdrawn. And by a straw poll vote of all the board members, it was the unanimous direction that the applicant returned with the amended plan that had the two parking lots separated and the variances. This evening, we'll present that plan to you. The presentation will be made initially by Peter Strong, who designed it. It'll be followed by Scott Kennel, who is our traffic expert, who testified with regard to circulation, and he'll again describe the amended circulation. And last is Steve Rodasty. This is a minor changes to the building to accommodate this redesign. And there were also a couple of outstanding requirements of this board, like taking off signs and things like that on the building that Mr. Rodasty is prepared to address. If I may, Mr. Chair, before we begin, because this application was heard on October 20th, and I am seeing new faces, could we confirm those members who are qualified to vote on the application, and those who have perhaps certified that they reviewed the prior transcripts?
Yeah, I believe I myself, I know I certified.
Thank you.
I believe Mr. Gazer certified, as well as Mr. Mercer. And Mr. Kyle, did you certify?
Yes, I sent the email in, and I also-
Okay, yeah, I wasn't sure. Okay, yeah, so, yeah, you're all set.
Okay, so just to be clear, Mr. Gerber, I didn't hear. You said you did or did not?
Mr. Mercer?
I'm sorry, Mr. Bishop, I meant. Mr. Bishop, did you certify or not?
No, I did not.
Okay, well, you can still participate. You just can't vote, but if you have any questions or comments you want to make, you're certainly welcome to do that.
Thank you.
Okay.
I appreciate it, Mr. Chairman. So, in addition to those who have certified, and I thank you all of you for doing so, Mr. Cristiano was present at the meeting, so he's a qualified voter?
Yes.
Mr. Greenfield was present and is qualified. Mr. Seaman was present, and Ms. Talente was present.
Yes.
I'm reading from the prior transcript. Thank you so much.
You're very welcome.
Mr. Peter Strong, Mr. Scott Kennel, and Mr. Steve Rodasty all were sworn in in previous hearings. Their credentials were made part of the record, and their expertise was accepted. If I may, Mr. Cuchero, I'll remind them that they're under oath and ask if the Board will allow them to continue to so testify.
That's fine.
Thank you. And one last piece of housekeeping. There was a requirement that the applicant renotice and republish for the hearing that was scheduled for December, and that meeting was canceled, and it was adjourned to January 5th.
It was adjourned to January 5th, at which time we carried it on the record to tonight without further notice being required.
Mr. Cuchero, thank you. Just wanted the record to be complete on those points. Mr. Strong has exhibit to Mr. Howard. Are you going to run the screen, or is Mr. Strong?
It'd probably be best for you, too, for Mr. Strong.
Okay. Comfortable, Peter?
Yes, yes.
So, the exhibits that we have, there's an aerial that we had introduced previously in October. There's an amended aerial that has the amended site plan superimposed on it. There's a colored rendering. There's an auto turn circulation plan and a lighting plan, and those will all be, those maybe all be referred to by Mr. Strong. Could we begin, Mr. Strong, with the overall aerial just so that everyone here can see the property we're talking about?
Yes, I hope that you can all see the aerial that shows the existing conditions out of the site. The Lot 2 that's noted in the center of the plan is the existing Janico Building. Industrial Court runs in an S shape near the bottom. Vanderweer Road is along the right side angled 45 degrees to the border. And then the site, which is noted as proposed Lot 4, is also outlined in yellow along with Lot 2. So those are the two properties that we're looking at. And then there's a white dash line that shows a 500-foot radius that goes out from the perimeter of the Lot 4 site, showing what's out there at the current time.
And board members-
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, Ken, to interrupt, but like, did I miss something? Like, are we starting this over from the beginning?
They're allowed to put on the record, you know-
I understand. I'm just asking, I'm just asking if we're starting over from the beginning, or we're like finishing up where we were. I just, I just don't, I'm like a little confused, that's all. I'm just asking. I'm not opining one way or the other.
Ms. Beam, our goal is to go right to where we left off, but I thought it would be prudent for those members of the Board who are new just to see its location on the aerial. So-
Understood. I was just confused, that's all.
Mr. Strong, and for the board members, all around this property is an industrial park that is approved but not yet built. This would be the first new building in the industrial park. And as the record will reflect, the owner of Lot 4 is also the owner of Lot 2, and on Lot 2, our client runs his janitorial supply business known as Janico, and it is his intention to build this building for his own purposes. As we indicated on the record, we're asking for up to two, no more than two tenants in this building. That's a belt and suspenders approach, just in case Mr. our client at Janico does not need the entire building. Currently, he believes that he will. And Mr. Strong, if we could go to the second exhibit, the aerial that shows the plan superimposed on it.
Okay, this is the same aerial basically with the proposed building on Lot 4, including the truck-loading areas along the lower portion of the building, facing the loading docks on the Janico Building, and two car parking areas on either end of the building.
Fine. And if we could go-
This is the new layout.
That's the new layout. If we could go to the rendering. Before we proceed with presenting the new rendering, Mr. Strong, all of the exhibits that you're introducing to the Board this evening were properly delivered to the Board a minimum of 48 hours before today's hearing?
Yes, they were actually presented before the original hearing in December.
So, all right, so these are on our exhibit list then currently?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
They're either exhibits, or they are part of the package of site plan drawings that were are part of the review process. So this is the colored rendering of the plan, again, showing the proposed warehouse building, which consists of 70,320 square feet, including 63,288 square feet of warehouse, and two office elements composing 7,032 square feet altogether. There are 36 car parking spaces, 15 in the front and 21 in the rear, and 13 truck-loading docks along the or it's basically the westerly side of the building.
When we presented in October, when Mr. Strong presented the plan in October, the plan was substantially the same as this with a material change. And the material change is that the parking lot that is located, you can see the north arrow, not true north, but on the northern end of the building, is that where Peter's indicating, that's where the parking was for cars, and now you'll see the parking for cars is separated, and it's on the north side of the building. Peter, if you could take us through the changes to the plan that have been made?
Yes. We moved 15 parking spaces from the, what we'll call the northwest corner of the building, that was there previously, to the front area of the building, so that there, and we also adjusted the location of the office space to be in the northeast corner of the building, where it was formerly in the north northwest, where the parking was. So we moved the office and the car parking to match each other. We took the truck-loading area, and there are still 13 loading docks, as there were previously, along with two potential drive-in doors. But we have widened the truck-loading spaces so that they are 18 feet apart, as opposed to 12 feet where they were previously, which gives more maneuvering room into and out of the spaces. And we also angled the driveway in the exit area out to Industrial Court to make entrance and exit easier for truck-turning movements into and out of the site.
And Peter, but for those changes, is the plan that's being presented to the Board this evening the same as the one that we all looked at in October?
That is correct, yes.
There are, I'd like to just go over a couple of points that were raised in the CME report of December 9th. He said, where are those notes? There isn't a comment in the report about lighting, and I know that you had the opportunity to review your plans and to discuss them with Ms. Spiro. Is it safe to say that that was a typographical error, that your plans are in fact compliant, but your plans have a typographical error on them?
Yes, unfortunately, and I apologize for this, but there was a typographical error that said that the minimum lighting level in the parking lots was zero, when in fact, minimum lighting in the parking lot is 0.3, which matches the township ordinance requirement. So we actually do comply with that portion, and there's not an area in the parking and truck-loading areas that do not have lighting.
There's, the driveways that are on the site, some of them are 25 feet wide and some are 30 feet wide, and the ordinance has some language about 20, anything over 24 feet should be approved by this Board, and also has a recommendation of 30 feet for industrial driveways. I'll begin by, all these plans were delivered to the Fire Marshal, for Chief Lewis to review, and to the Board, you'll see that there's a report from the chief indicating that he has no objection to the plans. He has some technical requirements with fire hydrant locations. Mr. Strong, if you would confirm that you'll comply with Chief Lewis's fire hydrant requirements?
Absolutely, absolutely, we will.
Okay, and if you could just briefly describe where the 25-foot and the 30-foot driveway locations are on this plan?
Yes, the requirement for 30-foot driveways is for the main circulation aisles, and the aisleway in between the two buildings has been designed so that it is 30 feet wide. So we do comply with that requirement. The parking lot areas in the front and back of the building have 25-foot driveway aisles, which is part of the ordinance requirements for parking lots to have adequate access and to provide backing and turning movements for the cars in the parking spaces. So we comply with that as well.
Okay. The, and on your auto-turning circulation plan that was submitted as part of your package, you demonstrated that all these driveways handle all the anticipated truck and car movements?
Yes. Did you want to see that, or no?
No.
Okay.
If someone wants to see it, we'll bring it up. Mr. Kennel will testify further on that when he's called.
Right.
There's a request that we, there is a suggestion that sidewalks could be installed along Industrial Court. There's a calculation of the amount that would be paid by the applicant if the sidewalks were not installed. Or the record board members, there are no sidewalks currently on Industrial Court, and it is strictly industrial buildings that are on and proposed for Industrial Court. Your applicant has no issue at all installing the sidewalks if requested, or making the cash contribution if requested, and looks to this Board for guidance on that point.
Mr. Chair, I would recommend taking the fee in this particular location.
Okay.
Okay, and that's acceptable to the applicant if that is the direction. There's, in the report, there's also a request that we install bollards, where the bollards are required to provide safety along the building and parking stalls. The applicant, for the Board's consideration, the applicant has no issue at all installing bollards wherever directed by this Board or the Board's professional staff. We recognize the benefits of the, the safety benefits of bollards.
I would also note that the parking spaces are all faced away from the building or are not adjacent to the building itself, so that we will still install bollards wherever we're required to, but we've, we've set up the parking lot to avoid the potential conflict.
So, wherever directed, the applicant has no issue installing them? Mr. Strong, it's just a request, you confirm that the stormwater system that you have designed for this site is fully conforming with the 2021 NJDEP requirements?
It is.
And if if you could confirm, if you could confirm that all of the light fixtures, you've testified that the lighting is compliant, if you could confirm all of the light fixtures are shielded?
All the light fixtures are downward-facing and shielded so that they will be focused on the parking facilities and not extending into the into the atmosphere or out to the sides, yes.
And that you have adequate trash receptacles on-site for trash and for recyclables, which will be removed, and the materials will be removed by a private hauler?
Yes, just for your edification, we have trash recycling enclosures at either corner of the truck-loading area, which are nearest to the office spaces, as well as there are a couple of trash recycling enclosures along the property line at the current time, which we're relocating to the corner of the Janico parking lot, as those are their facilities.
And if you could, on behalf of the applicant, I can confirm and represent that hazardous and flammable materials are not stored and will not be stored on the site. This is a intended to be janitor supplies that are being stored and distributed. There is attached to the December report, the December CME report, a technical report, and have you had an opportunity to go through that technical report?
I have.
Are you comfortable advising the Board and the Board's professionals that you can and you will address the requirements set forth in the December 9th, 2022, Technical Engineering Review Number 4 letter?
Yes, we can and we will.
Mr. Chair, unless there are further questions of Mr. Strong, I have nothing further. I did want to share with the Board that- I did want to share with the board that when we were before you in October, we had made certain commitments during the site plan presentation and these commitments remain. There was a request that the applicant confirmed that the waters lines would be installed as a condition of the site plan. He was, there was a request that the, we have motion centers, motion sensors on the lights that would only turn the lighting on during the night hours when there was movement. And there was also a request that we dim the lights, that the lights in in the parking area be dimmed during the overnight hours. So all of those were placed on the record and I want to make certain that they weren't weren't lost. And just one thing that I, there had been a lot of discussion early on about the requirement of farmland buffers. But the record will reflect that the farmland use around the property has been officially abandoned. The property is no longer in a farmland program, so that was removed. I do intend to call Mister Kendall, Mister Dusty, but I have nothing further, Mister Strong, at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Should I proceed with the others or do you wish to examine Mister Strong by the professionals and the board members?
I mean, you know, I think I'd rather you just finish all your testimony. And then, you know, we'll have the questions following.
Very fine.
Okay.
Yes, thank you. Mister Strong, please don't leave us, Mister.
You want me to stop sharing my screen or?
I, I think
Should leave it.
If you if you're controlling the screen and Mister Kendall may need a little assistance from you as we move forward.
Sure, okay.
If we could call Mister Scott Kennel?
Hello?
Where's Scott?
I'm here.
Okay, can't get you on my screen. But Mister Kennel, for the board members, Mister Kennel was sworn, Mister Kennel was qualified as a traffic expert and so testified. Mister Kennel, you see the revised plan that Mister Strong is introducing to the board. And you see that the right, the parking for the cars on the north side has been separated from the truck parking. I would ask if from your professional opinion, is this a safer design than the original plan that was presented to the board?
Based on my expert opinion, this is an improved site plan. It's enhanced and it better segregates the passenger vehicles from the loading areas.
Does it remove potential conflicts of the cars and the trucks, which was the goal that we were asked to address?
As compared to the prior plan, yes, it does.
And Mister Strong indicated that he has twenty-five-foot driveways in the car parking areas and thirty feet in the main. Would you comment on the adequacy of the circulation that is shown on this plan?
Yeah, the twenty-five-foot wide circulation aisles adjacent to the passenger vehicle parking spaces is consistent with industry standards and what has typically been approved by this board. And the thirty-foot drive aisle that is in the loading area is appropriate, given the type of vehicles serving both buildings in Lot Two and the proposed building on Lot Four.
And would you provide us with your professional opinion and the adequacy of that central drive area for the anticipated truck turning movements for trucks coming in and backing into the parking stalls as shown?
Yes, again, the the plan as designed, we have approximately a hundred and ninety feet between the two buildings. And the striping that's shown on the exhibit here, taking into consideration loading activities for the existing building. The plan is, as provided, can accommodate truck access to the existing loading docks as well as to propose loading decks. So in my expert opinion, this plan can operate safely and efficiently.
Mister Chair, I have nothing further of Mister Kennel. He testified extensively previously with regard to the the other traffic and circulation points.
Okay.
With your permission, Mister Chair, I'll ask that Mister Kennel, please stay with us. And and Mister Redasti, if you could, if we could I don't, I, I'm having a hard time getting all of the faces on my screen, but
I am, I am here, Ken.
Very fine, thank you. Mister Redasti, I think that you're going to want to introduce for the board's consideration, plans that you've provided. And I'll remind the board that you were also, that you previously testified that you previously were sworn and that your credentials as an architect were accepted by the board. If you could.
I'm gonna stop sharing my screen then, so Steve can do it.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to share my screen.
Very fine.
So after the last meeting, I made some design changes to the building. These changes were made to the proposed floor plan and proposed elevation sheet, SK one and SK two. The revised drawings are dated November seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two and were submitted to the board prior to this meeting. I have here in front of me sheet SK one. So at the last meeting, I was asked if the doors met the American with Disabilities Act and the New Jersey Barrier Free Subcode. And yes, they do. A note has been added on the floor plan on sheet A one, which we added in the center here to show that it complied. The code requires sixty percent of public entrances to be accessible and at least one per tenant and at least two ADA exits are required for a tenant. We will far exceed those requirements. They'll go above and beyond what's required by code. Based on the requested site circulation changes, I moved the one office location from the northwest corner, which was here, to the northeast corner back here. I moved the glass storefronts, windows and roof overhangs to correspond with this change. And I'm gonna skip the sheet SK two, which is part of the same submission. Just to So those storefront areas are now in this location. Where previously, they were around the corner on this location on the west elevation. Now they're located on the north elevation in the corner. So we use all the same design features, we moved them from that location and we made other small modifications. So the building looked architecturally correct.
I'm gonna interrupt you just for a moment. The architectural features of this building, the colors, the materials, the all of the treatments on the on the facade, these are all the same as you had previously presented to Ms. Beam. Ms. Beam had indicated that they're acceptable to her.
Yes, that is correct. We we kept all the same materials, colors, finitudes. The the changes on the facades were pretty much three small changes. Moving, moving the office. And in the next, the next change was, we changed the spacing of the overhead doors. And this change was to correspond with the site changes. We have the same number of doors, but they're spaced out slightly. They're, I believe, eighteen feet on center versus the closer spacing that we had before. We were able to do this by moving the office from this corner to the corner, to the north east corner.
I think they got rid of the signs on the building too, isn't that correct?
Oh, we did. So prior to this and the previous version, on the west elevation, we had two building-mounted signs. One was over this office and one was located here where this office was. We've removed all building-mounted signs. And now the only thing that close to a building-mounted sign is the number four that we have on the west elevation at the top left-hand corner. This is just, this is just the street address and it's used for to make the building easier to find for emergency service.
I agree with the architectural, we're satisfied with the plans that have been provided.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If I think that you also made some tune-ups on the notes to confirm that the sign, the monument sign will be fully compliant with the ordinance?
I did. There was a typo on the monument sign. The sharing screen is right over my Zoom feature, which is funny. There, if I can move that. Okay. So previously, there was a, there was a typo on the monument sign. So this previously said sixty square feet per face, but it's actually thirty-six square feet per face. And the reason for that is the building is twelve feet in length. It has a two-foot base and is three foot above the two-foot base. And and I believe according to the ordinance, the two-foot base doesn't count towards the calculations. Earlier, we did, we did count it. So we, so we made that change and we believe the sign fully complies with the ordinance at this time. I believe those were all the changes we made to the drawings. But I wanted to just point out that with the changes, the building still has been designed to meet green building practices in mind. Some of these features are that the exterior walls of the building will be constructed of precast tilt-up concrete, which produces less material waste than conventional construction such as CMU walls. The exterior walls be constructed with concrete sandwich panels. These panels include intercore, continuous insulation, which has little or no thermal bridging, which is common to insulation of other types of construction. This creates a more energy-efficient building envelope. The building will also utilize some construction materials that were produced within a five-hundred-mile radius from the building, which is another green item. Recycled materials will be utilized in the construction. We also plan on having low-e thermally broken glazing. And this will be utilized to reduce heat gain and energy loss. We also have energy-efficient HVAC units and we also have energy-efficient LED lighting. Inside the building, we'll have occupancy sensors that will be utilized to control interior lights, which will also save on energy costs. We also plan on using high R-value insulated doors. And seals will be provided at loading dock doors to reduce loss of conditioned air when the doors are in the open position.
Those are similar, if not identical, commitments that you shared with the board in October. Is that correct, Steve?
That is correct.
I think there's one more important topic. We had members of the board asking us where the HVAC system would be located and how it would be screened. If you could share with the board members how it will be one hundred percent screened from the traveling public?
Yes, so, so so the building, we we don't anticipate the entire building would be air-conditioned, probably just the two office areas. So the majority of the warehouse will just be heated. And we'll have radiant heaters that'll be suspended inside the building, will not be visible. The offices themselves will have air conditioning and those air conditioning units will be on the roof and they will be behind the parapet over the offices. If we do need additional height to screen those units, we will lower the roof in those areas so that we have additional parapet height without changing the look that you see here of the front of the building. And that way, the, if needed, you know, then then those HVAC units will be fully screened.
Mister Chair and board members, that Steve, am I correct? That concludes your testimony?
Uh, yes, that that does conclude my testimony.
Mister Chair and board members, that concludes the presentation of the third witness. That is our presentation to the board this evening. All of the witnesses are available to your board professionals and to the board and to the public at this time.
Okay, thank you. Can he stop sharing the screen, please?
Yes, I can.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Do I have any comments from our professionals?
Chairman.
I have nothing, Mister Chairman.
Any board members have any questions?
I have a few questions for the traffic expert. Mister Kennel, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
I have some questions about what kind of evaluations that you've done off-site on the roads that travel to and from this facility. How far out did you go and where did you read the traffic?
If, if, Counsel, if I may, before he begins, the applicant, because it is an of-right project, the applicant's responsibility to analyze the surrounding roadways is not part of the applicant's burden. We are, we're not asking for a use, we are permitted use in in the zone that requires, that permits industrial development. I think it's important that that be on the record. I have no problem with Mister Kennel sharing his examination with you.
In response to your question, again, our office prepared a traffic study was dated November seventeen, twenty twenty-one. That was submitted to the board. And it included data collection along Vandervier Road at not only industrial court, but at Adelphia Road and also at Howell Road. And in in the conduct of that analysis, it was determined that you know, we do a level service analysis where we rate intersection from A to F, C to D is a target range for acceptable traffic conditions. And at industrial court and Vandervier Road, it was determined that the intersection would operate at level service B with the construction occupancy of the Lot Four building. As it relates to Adelphia Road and Vandervier Road, which, again, that intersection, we're expecting that'd be primarily the passenger vehicles associated with the site. We would expect the truck traffic to be oriented towards Howell Road. But that intersection would operate at level service B in the morning and C in the afternoon, again, well within acceptable ranges. And as far as the intersection of Howell Road and Vandervier Road, it was projected to operate at level service B, again, with full occupancy of the building on Lot Four.
Well, I know that you you were out there, so you know that Vandervier and Howell Road, it's obvious the trucks can't make a left turn there. They're gonna have to veer to the right and go up in that direction.
I would expect that that'd be the natural pattern, correct?
Okay, did you do any studies about what happens when they hit Route thirty-three?
When they extend, I'm sorry to hear last.
But probably maybe half a mile from there is the intersection of Howell Road and Route thirty-three. Did you conduct any studies about what happened there?
No, we did not. Typically, we use as a threshold is a hundred trips as as part of impact and we kind of at that intersection, we're expecting approximately thirty peak hour trips at at Vandervier Road and Howell Road, which again, that would not normally fit the criteria for an analysis of an off-site location. As Mister Pape indicated, since this is a permitted use, but we did analyze that. So as far as the intersection of Route thirty-three and Howell Road, we'd expect the peak hour impact be approximately thirty trips. So one car every two minutes or or a truck.
In in, the reason why I'm asking you is in the last eight months, I toured at Coates Neck High School temporarily. I've gone through there roughly two hundred times. I've never seen a tractor-trailer make a turn on Route thirty-three from Howell Road. I just want to know if they can. That's what my concern is. I've never seen one.
Based on my observations, that intersection, it's, you know, an NJDOT-designed intersection and it's one that would accommodate a tractor-trailer. I mean, we have, there's the industrial use right adjacent to that intersection, Fairfield Business Park, I think it's called, or Industrial Park, that has a number of industrial uses. And I've done work on that site as well, so some of the truck activity from that site would use Howell Road to access Route thirty-three. So I haven't been out there to, you know, count the number of vehicles being processed through the intersection or number of trucks turning left or right. But based on my observations, truck traffic has proceeded through there and it seems to be a design adequate to accommodate trucks.
Okay, it it's just my suggestion. I think that it should be, it should be with that. I'm done.
Any other board members?
Yes, I would just like to know the hours of operation days, please.
It's a twenty-four-seven operation and it's currently, the owner does not operate Friday afternoons or Saturday and has limited activity on Sunday.
Does that also pertain to the existing warehouse same hours in operation?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And we, as we indicated when we were And we, as we indicated when we were here in October, our client has, I think it was, been in that building and operating, uh, I think it was seven years. I know he's very much established and has a growing and successful business.
So you got Joe?
We're good.
Any other members? All right, um, I guess we will, we're gonna open it up to the public.
Yeah, for questions and comments.
Yep.
If any member of the public wants to comment, please use the raise your hand feature and I will move you into the meeting. Moving AJC over now.
Okay, AJC, you need to unmute yourself. And if you can't, turn your camera on.
Okay, um, turn the camera. Having trouble turning the camera on.
Mister Pape, do you have any objections to, uh?
There we go.
Oh, okay. Let me just swear you in first in case you make any comments. Do you swear or affirm testimony about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Okay, please state and spell your name and give us your address.
Backlin Sisterra, three Howell Road, Freehold, New Jersey, zero seven seven two eight.
Okay, go ahead, ma'am.
Okay, I, I have a concern. Given that in the last, I don't know how long, maybe a year, I'm going to say, there's been either approved or proposed up to ten warehouses and within a one-mile area of Vander, this Vanderweer site. You were speaking about the truck traffic. Howell Road has a four-ton weight limit. And Mister Kennel was saying that they're going to be accessing Howell Road, not Adelphia Road or Vanderweer, the end of Vanderweer, I guess. How are we? How, how are we handling this? If Howell Road's a four-ton weight limit?
Mister Kennel, are, are you familiar with there being a power road?
I'm, I'm not aware of it. I was just kinda looking through my files, but, um, again, we have existing industrial uses on Industrial Court, uh, that has to service truck traffic. And again, the, the understanding is, is that the trucks would be more or less oriented towards the Route thirty-three, which then provides access east and west to other state highways.
With regard to other applications proposed or approved, they're not part of this application. Only, only related application to this one is the industrial court that created industrial lots in which this property is located.
I understand that, but the main route from, to this proposed warehouse as stated is Howell Road. It's posted a four-ton weight limit on both ends. So I don't, I think that's something the board needs, needs to consider, especially being that within a one-mile area, just two warehouses that are proposed to be put behind my house, it's going to be up to seven hundred cars, I think, or transportation trucks a day. I, I honestly don't know how this area can handle that truck traffic. There's a swim club right down from Vanderweer Road that's very busy in the summertime. The next road over on Oakerson Road is the, uh, North Howell Baseball Fields. And Howell Road's a little tiny road. I mean, it's been here a long time. It has great access to Route eighteen, Route thirty-three, but it's a four-ton weight limit. The other roads are so old that there's no posted weight limit. Um, I don't know Adelphia. I'm not familiar with Adelphia Road as far as their weight limit or how much truck traffic they can handle. But I really think that's, um, an issue with truck traffic. We have, I live here, I see the trucks go by. Nothing ever gets done. They don't get ticketed. We've never complained. But we have plenty of video showing a lot of trucks on Howell Road already. And as far as turning out of Vanderweer Road, probably three instances, I think we have video of that. Trucks can't handle that turn. They have to come, come over to the other lane in order to handle that turn onto Vanderweer Road, out of the, out of the industrial park. So I think that's pretty much all I have to say, just that I would hope you consider the truck traffic and what it, what, what it's going to do. And the fact that it's a four-ton weight limit on the road. And that's it.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, thanks for listening.
Is there anybody else from the public that would like to, uh, have any questions or any comments? Please raise your hand.
Give him a few more seconds, but I'm seeing none at the moment. Moving, uh, Mark Parisi over.
Hey, good evening, everyone. Can you hear me? Hello?
Ron, you're muted.
All right, Mister Parisi, uh, do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay, please state and spell your name and give us your address.
Mark Parisi, M-A-R-C-P-A-R-I-S-I, two Castle Court.
Okay, go ahead, Mister Parisi.
I wanna, uh, thank Councilman Gazea for raising the issues regarding the, uh, traffic. And, uh, the, the only thing that I wanted to add to, um, Mrs. Sisterra's point is that I have the, the resolution, uh, denying the application for the warehouse that was on Howell Road, application AAFFHW. And paragraph twenty-one of this board's resolution denying that application says, Mister Lyman testified that trucks would be directed by signage to Oakerson Road as opposed to Howell Road because there is a weight restriction on Howell Road. Mister Lyman confirmed that there would be no tractor-trailer traffic on Howell Road. And that was this board's resolution that was memorialized on December sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one. That, that's all I have. You can take me out, you can take me out.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
If anyone else has any comments or questions, please raise your hand. Moving in Candace Stovinaro.
Hello?
Hello.
Hi.
Okay, just need to swear you in before you get started. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state and spell your name and give us your address.
Candace Stovinaro, C-A-N-D-A-C-E. D as in David, O V as in Victor, E N as in Nancy, E R as in Robert, O. Fifty-eight Victory Road, Howell, New Jersey, zero seven seven three one.
Okay, go ahead.
So based on the, what Mister Parisi just went off of, um, the average fully loaded tractor-trailer weighs about eighty thousand pounds fully loaded. Empty, thirty-five thousand pounds. Um, if you do your math, all of those are far exceed the four-ton weight limit for that Howell Road, um, entrance and exit. That's basically what I really need to point out, that obviously that this is significantly higher than what is acceptable. We do. Sorry. So I would like that the board to, uh, really take that into note. Um, and that is documented material. You can pull that up yourself. And that's pretty much all I need to say. And that's based on a fifty-three-foot eighteen-wheeler. Most of them range from like sixty-five to seventy-two, I believe. That's all I need to say.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
If anybody else has any questions, please raise your hand. Chairman, I'm seeing nobody.
Alrighty, um, we can close the public now, Mister Chair. Yeah, well, we're gonna close the public portion.
Okay, Mister Chair, could I, well, actually, let's let Mister Pape, if he has any closing comments and then I can comment.
Sure, yeah, okay.
Thank you, Mister Chair. Thank you, Mister Chairman. This is an application for preliminary final site plan of an industrial building in an industrial park. The industrial park was recently created by this planning board. The relief that we're requesting is a, is site plan approval. And the only variance relief that is required is a result of moving the parking lot to a location that was suggested by the board and the board's professionals. In all other respects, it's fully compliant. Our client operates his business from the adjacent building, which is known as eighty-eight Vanderweer Road. The types of vehicles that he uses for that building will not change for his, when he extends his business into this building. The, the issue of the weight control on the roadway is, is, is one that exists. It was existed at the time that this industrial court was, was, this industrial park was created and it was existed at the time that all of the prior industrial buildings were approved. I do not know the accuracy of the statement. I will tell you that we have no choice but to abide by such regulations on roadways. Um, and it will, i- if, in fact, the comments that were just made are accurate, we'll be forced to abide by them. Currently, all of the businesses that are operating in that area, and there are quite a few industrial buildings in that area, are using Howell Road and Howell Road is the road that has been directed, the traffic has been directed to for access to Route thirty-three. Uh, any and all reference to the other applications and testimony on other applications is not applicable. The portion of Howell Road that was part of the AAFF application, I handled that on behalf of the applicant. It was not this part of Howell Road. So we respectfully ask that the board consider the relief that we are presenting to you. The relief is, this is a fully conforming building. As the, the zoning chart will indicate, we are, um, under the impervious coverage. We are under the building coverage. That the only variances that are required are the ones associated with moving that parking lot to the location that was suggested by the board. So respectfully, we ask that the board consider the application favorably and allow the Janico business to grow in place. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Pape.
Mister Chair, I just have one question to Mister Pape before I, um, provide some legal guidance. Mister Pape, Mister Kennel's testimony is what it is. You're, you're not asking that we, uh, you know, you are asking that we accept Mister Kennel's testimony.
Yes, I am.
Okay. All right, so with that said, Mister Chairman, I just wanna talk a little bit about traffic and the planning board. So just generally, the difference between a planning board and a zoning board for an application like this is if you went to the zoning board, it's because the use is not permitted in the zone. You're at the planning board because the use is permitted. This is what all of our New Jersey courts say, and there's a couple very well-known decisions that discuss it. One is Duncan Donuts versus, uh, North Brunswick. And the second, I forget who it's against, but it's Lionel's Appliance, uh, via another town. Here's what the courts tell us and what we're, whether we agree or not, we're compelled to follow. When you're dealing with a permitted use, the courts say that the governing body, when identifying the permitted use, is presumptively familiar with the traffic in the area. And that it understands that greater traffic will be created. What the courts go on to say is you can't deny an application for increased traffic. However, even when an application is fully compliant, a planning board always has the jurisdiction to analyze the safety of ingress and egress. So here, undisputably, we have a permitted use. Whatever the traffic flow may or may not be, um, we, we are hyper-focused by the courts on, does any of this have an impact on the safety of ingress and egress? Uh, the applicants, professionals have not testified that there is any impediment to ingress or egress, you know, whether there's a weight limiter. However, it is that the car, that the vehicles get to the, to the ingress and egress. You know, they've not identified that, that that would result in an unsafe, uh, situation. What I would ask our board engineer, uh, Laurie, in, in your review and listening to the professional testimony, uh, do you have any disagreement and find that there may be, uh, dangerous ingress and egress?
I'm sorry, Ron, you broke up and I find there may be.
Oh, um, do you, based upon the plans you reviewed, the testimony that you've listened to, uh, do you find that it, the traffic patterns may result in a dangerous, not just, you know, greater traffic coming in and out, but a dangerous ingress and egress?
No, I do not.
Okay, so you've heard that from your board engineer. So placing that in the context of what our courts have consistently advised, the increased traffic under the testimony you've heard tonight does not result in an unsafe ingress or egress. If that's what you find, um, then that cannot support an approval that there may be increased traffic in the general area, that it may even be inconvenient, you know, that traffic and make traveling more difficult. The sole discretion that the board has, again, and this is the New Jersey courts talking, is does, do all of those characteristics result in an unsafe ingress and egress? If your answer is no, then that traffic issue is not a basis, uh, upon which to, to, uh, support a denial. But what I would also say is that, um, you know, if you find that your, uh, your approval is based in part, at least upon Mister Kennel's testimony, uh, we can put that in as a condition that, you know, uh, if there is a weight limit, you know, there's gonna, we've, we have, we have accepted Mister Kennel's testimony with regard to any weight limits. So I don't know if anyone has any questions.
Anybody from the board?
With that, um, you know, thinking about the weight limit, you know, if in fact there is a weight limit on that portion of Howell Road, which would be the primary access to Vanderweer, I mean, what, what impact does that have? I mean,
Well, I would, I would turn back to Mister Pape. What's, what's your, uh, statement on that, Mister Pape?
If there is a weight limit on the road and it is a current invalid weight limit on the road, it has to be abided by. It would appear that all of the industrial uses that are accessed, and there are certainly a, a number of industrial uses in that area in the industrial park and around that are using it with, with, um, trucks. That, that's not, the, the fact that other trucks are using it is not a basis for us to say we can, but it's certainly a basis for us to explore whether that weight limit is, is valid and, and is a current weight limit or it's just something that...
So Mister Chairman, here's maybe what I would, uh, recommend if there, if there is an approval tonight, that the weight limit be something that the applicant is required to, um, resolve in terms of, is there a weight limit? And if there is, what is it? That they have to provide that, uh, to the boards. resolve in terms of, is there a weight limit, and if there is, what is it, that they have to provide that to the board's engineer? And number two, if the board engineer finds that that results in an impact to the ingress or egress, that the applicant would have to return to the board. Mr. Mr. Paper, is there any objection to that?
No.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, any other board members have any questions about this? Alright. I guess seeing none, I'll.
So the the motion, if it's a motion in the affirmative, would be a motion to grant preliminary and final site plan approval with ancillary variance relief, and then a motion to deny would just be a motion to deny.
Okay. So I'll entertain a motion.
Well, quick question, would it, would it make more sense with this potential weight restriction issue to grant preliminary and have them come back once everything's verified, or?
You could do that, that's an option.
I mean, if it's sufficient to grant approval, you know, and we're guaranteed they have to report back to us.
Okay, then that then that option would be to grant preliminary site plan approval with ancillary variance relief with the specific condition that they verify any weight limits and discuss any impact to ingress and egress when returning on final.
I would make motion for that.
I'll second.
Roll call, Mr. Christiana?
Yes.
Mr. Greenfield?
Yes.
Councilman Gager?
I'd like to say something before I vote, if you don't mind, if that's okay. In this day and age of warehouses, I look at a project like this, and I like it right off the bat. Based on its size and based on its location. I understand there is no ingress and egress issue at the site, but I'm not comfortable with the safety issues that are gonna go on at Route thirty-three and Howell Road, and that's from my experiences going through there. But I'm not a traffic expert, so I will defer to Mr. Kennel because if push comes to shove down the road, he'll be the person whose testimony will be relied on. With that being said, I will also vote yes.
Mr. Talente?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Do we need any alternate votes, Mr. Kachar?
We need, unless we have nine already, we would not, if we don't have nine, we would need the alternates.
Okay, Mr. Kyle?
Yes.
Mr. Mercer?
Yes.
And Chairman Babi?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, board members, board professionals, all, thank you and good evening.
Have a good night.
Good night.
Alrighty. Next up, case number SP one zero nine six, three Puglisi Brothers, Inc., preliminary and final major site plan.
Hey, Matt, this should be John Rentschler is the attorney, and he can tell us who else. Or or Bill Mayer, either one of them.
Alright, just give me one second to make sure everybody's at previous one. I think I have everybody. And the attorneys were Mr. Rentschler or Mr.?
Or or Mr. Mayor.
I don't see either of them.
Mr. Locata, maybe?
There we go.
Okay.
Sorry about that. He's coming over, just give it one second. I think he might have dropped off there.
Here he is.
Okay.
Hey, Peter, we just need you to take yourself off mute and turn on the camera. Okay. Alright, is there anybody else that we need to let in, Mr. Locata?
It's actually John.
Oh, John, I'm sorry, so I was correct.
Yeah, Allison Coffin.
Okay. Okay, so, Mr. Rentschler, if you just enter your appearance and you can begin.
Sure, good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, my name is John Rentschler, I'm the attorney at some with Mayor Locata. We're representing the applicant tonight, we, the Wuzi Brothers, we do business at Wuzi Egg Farms. Okay.
Okay, Mr. Rentschler, just before we allow you to introduce Ms. Coffin, I just wanna make a couple statements and just correct me if I'm if I'm wrong. So the the subject property here is a is an agricultural use, it's a farm. The applicant had several improvements that it that they wanted to place on the farm. At the town's direction, they first applied to the county agricultural board because under the statutes, the county ag board would preempt local approval. The county ag board actually exercised jurisdiction over portions of the project and declined to exercise jurisdiction over one element. So everything out there has been approved by the county agricultural board, I believe with the exception of the stormwater management. So what you hear tonight is gonna be limited to stormwater management and because approvals have been gained for the remainder of the project. Is that, is that accurate, Mr. Rentschler?
Yeah, that that's correct. So we were before the county ag board, the concept in June. And they basically determined that we were a commercial farm, they had jurisdiction, and they approved the farm operation aspects of the chicken house and the changes to the building and the the feeding grain elevator. The one thing they weren't comfortable doing was reviewing the stormwater management plan for the chicken house. So that's why we came back to the Howell Planning Board for your expertise on stormwater management.
Okay, and who do you have that will testify?
I'm gonna actually, to to give the board a little background of the farm property and stuff, I was thinking about putting Tom Fuzi on, just to give a little background information on the farm operation and stuff.
Is Mr. Puglisi with you?
He's actually sitting right to my left.
Okay, sir, can you just raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Okay, just make sure you're close so that we can hear you, and please state and spell your name for the record.
Yeah, my name is Thomas Puglisi, T H O N S, P U G L I S I. And I'm one of seven third-generation family members involved in the operation of my family's farm.
Could you just give us a little background, just to give the board a flavor of how, you know, how long the farm's been there and sort of operating and stuff?
Yeah, so we've been operating in Howell here since the late nineteen forties, when my grandfather purchased the farm that we currently are on at seventy-five Easy Street. Back in the forties, we started with like twenty-five hundred chickens, and now we have about sixty thousand, and we're looking to expand even more. Our last, our newest farm was built in nineteen eighty-four, and our last major site addition was in the early nineties. So we're looking to bring the farm into the twenty-first century and continue the family legacy.
Can you just give them a little bit more quick rundown on how you operate?
So operation of the farm, we kind of think about it through the egg flow, if you look at Easy Street, the operation starts way in the back, so in the back corner of the property, we have a feed mill, that's where we make the feed onsite for the chickens that we house. The chicken house is a long building all the way to the back of the farm. That's where the chickens lay the eggs, and then they move on to a conveyor system that runs perpendicular to the building, straight into our grading plant. That's where we wash, grade, and package our eggs. Then they move further towards the front of the property, where we store them in the cooler, and then load them out to trucks all the way at the front, facing Easy Street.
Was there a reason that the farm needed to obtain these approvals to upgrade the facility?
I mean, the the reasons are a lot of regulatory and compliance reasons. So, and also trying to get into a better position to meet current demand. So across the country, we're seeing states requiring more and more cage-free production, so that's why we want to build a new cage-free barn, so we can satisfy that need of demand from customers. At the back of our grading plant, we're propose, we're, we want to add a pack, extra packaging storage. This is because of all the different types of eggs there are now, it's not just one egg anymore. You have white eggs, brown eggs, cage-free, cage-free white, cage-free brown, organic pasteurized, I mean, the list goes on. And packaging for putting in is even longer. So we just see every year our requirements for how much packaging we need to have on hand throws, and we're just running out of space.
So, Mr. Chair, if I could just interject, I I'm sorry, very sorry for interrupting, and I'm more than happy to listen to the history, but I would venture to guess, and I would defer to the chair, that we probably should just focus on the drainage, and then move on. I mean, I mean, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
I just thought that the board would like a little flavor of how the farm operated and.
Let's, hold on, just, I have one, just piece of housekeeping. I neglected to say that Megan Taliente has recused herself from from this application, so we'll we'll mention that in in the news. Look, the applicant gets to present, you know, in a way that they want to present it, so, you know, to the extent that the increase in chicken population, you know, has had an increase, has had an impact tonight, you know, it's it's their application to to, you know, present, so I would, I would just defer to them. But, you know, I also would recommend that, you know, there'd be a spotlight on on what it is that we're actually here to vote on tonight.
Please continue.
So, yeah, we have a small addition that we want to make on this, on the side of the grading plant. Well, we just want to move our employee break room and bathrooms over by the front entrance, it's a food safety concern. We don't want people carrying lunches through the plant with these washing packages. And then finally, we want to rebuild our existing cooler and expand it a bit to better cool our eggs and keep them in proper temperature. And that's a, that's just to stay in line with requirements from the Food and Drug Administration, as well as our safe quality food certification. So so that was just a little background that you just wanted to put out there before the board. Those were actually all before the ag board and approved before the ag board. So, you know, we're back here, we'll bring it forward to the the German system.
So with that background, who's gonna talk to us about the particulars of the stormwater management?
Rob Siv, our engineer.
Okay, so, Mr. Siv, are you in the room also?
I am.
Okay, do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Okay, please state and spell your name for the record.
Robert Siv, S I V in Big Turkey. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey, a graduate of New Jersey Institute of Technology, over twenty-seven years' experience in the engineering field. Testified before this board, as well as numerous boards throughout New Jersey.
Okay, we'll accept your credentials.
Thank you.
Thank you. I was sitting Coffin, was trying to put up an aerial for us, I don't know if I have some help about that.
So the image you're seeing on your screen is aerial image of the overall farm. The darker brown rectangle boxes are the approved building locations and additions by the ag board. And I won't go through the site, because Tom's gone through that for you. But the larger rectangular building on the top of your screen, that Mark approved chicken house building, that is the location of the proposed chicken house. Just behind that, to the north, is the relocated circulation aisle that allows access to the feed mill, which is to the right of the brown box, and then just behind that, to the north, is the proposed stormwater management basin. That's from what a management basin, and it's in size to mitigate the increase in flows from the chicken house, and it meets the current stormwater rules. We do have a four technical comments in Mr. Seaman's letter, we agreed to address them. And that is where the basin is located, is in that location right adjacent to the chicken house.
Mr. Chairman, maybe I could ask a couple of questions?
Please.
So just want to ensure that the existing stormwater conveyance system onsite and the grass whales, those are all adequately working?
Correct, there's a grass whale that's along and parallel to Easy Street, which is actually maintained by the farm, and it is working and working well at the moment.
And no issues with the existing conveyance system?
That is correct.
So, Mr. Chairman, with that and the agreement on record by Mr. Siv to the four technical comments in our review letter, I have no other questions as it relates to stormwater.
Alrighty, thank you.
We're done with this witness?
Okay, is that, is that, that's all for your testimony, Mr. Siv?
Correct, that addresses the stormwater.
Okay, did you want to put Ms. Coffin up now?
Actually, we're just addressing some of the now.
Okay.
Okay, did anybody from the board have any questions regarding the stormwater? We're good there? Alright, I guess then what we'll do is we'll open it up to the public. Anybody from the public that has any questions about the stormwater management or any comments, please raise your hand, and we'll bring you in.
I'm seeing nobody.
Okay, with that, we will close public comment. And if you'd like to just summarize?
I'd like to thank all the board members for, you know, reviewing this this process with us. You know, it is to help the farm move forward and be more efficient. The stormwater basin is properly sized, it's, you know, engineering to, you know, be good with the chicken house. And it's about it, just like to thank everybody for the time.
Alright, thank you. Alright, with that, I will accept a motion.
Hey, this would be a motion, again, this is exclusively on whether you find that the stormwater management is compliant, your board engineer has confirmed and found Mr. Siv's testimony to be accurate, so it'll be a motion if you wanted to grant it for preliminary and final site plan approval.
I will make motion for stormwater management approval.
And I'll second the final site plan.
Yes.
Alright, so we just need a second?
I'll second the motion.
And, Mr. Kachar, just to confirm, all present members are eligible to vote with the exception of Ms. Talente? There was no other testimony?
Yes, that's correct, that's correct.
Roll call, Mr. Bishop?
Very happy to vote yes on this.
Mr. Christiana?
Yes.
Mr. Greenfield?
Yes.
Councilman Gager?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Mr. Kyle?
Yes.
Mr. Mercer?
Yes.
And Chairman Babi?
Absolutely, yes.
Thank you, everyone, have a good night.
You too, have a good night.
Okay, so, Mr. Chairman, that concludes the applications we're hearing tonight. We do have a need for an executive session tonight. Matt has the resolution for that, but just so you know, the the board will not reconvene after executive, there's no further action that needs to be taken tonight. So for members of the public, we will read the resolution, vote on it, go into executive. executive, but we will not be coming out of executive uh to adjourn the meeting tonight. This will be the adjournment of the public session. Okay, Matt?
You need me to read that in? Hang on one second.
I'm not sure I have that, Ron.
Give me one moment. Uh, just give me a couple of seconds. Okay, let me uh, I'll read from something here. All right, whereas NJSA two colon four dash 12, the Open Public Meetings Act permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances. And whereas this public body is of the opinion that such circumstances presently exist, now there it be it resolved by the planning board of Howell Township, County of Monmouth, State of New Jersey as follows, the public shall be excluded from the discussion here and after, uh, limited to the matter of active acquisitions via Howell Township Planning Board. The general nature of the subject matter to be discussed is as followed, the same litigation as previously um cited. It is anticipated at this time that the above matter will be made public upon completion of the litigation, including any appeals. This resolution shall take effect immediately and the board will adjourn out of executive session, it will not come back into public session. So if we have a motion to approve that resolution?
I will make motion.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Matt, if you just call roll.
Yes, one second. Uh, Mr. Bishop?
Yes.
Mr. Christiana?
Yes.
Mr. Greenfield? Councilman Gager?
Yes.
Ms. Talente?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Mr. Kyle?
Yes.
Mr. Mercer?
Yes.
Chairman, bye bye.
Yes.
Okay, and Mr. Chair, you can just um ask that the public portion be adjourned and just another statement that the board will not be returning to public session.
Right, okay, so I need a motion um to adjourn?
The public session.
And, yeah, the public session and we will not be returning.
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Okay, uh, all in favor?
All right.
Okay, so Eileen previously emailed out the link for the executive session, so we need to get out of this meeting and just uh click that link, okay?
Click it and the pass codes and they're all sold.
Okay, great.
All in the meeting, I'll start the other one and bring everybody in.
Okay.
Thank you.